Good evening, this is the March 9th meeting of the zoning board of appeals. Do you have the floor?
Okay, we have appeal 2023-013 Coral Lee Bayfront LLC, 12 Phyllis Lane, Jamesport, Suffolk County Tax Map number 600-70-2-50.3, RB40 zoning for variances and/or relief from chapter 301-17, where proposed front yard 39.5 feet when minimum 50 feet required. Chapter 301-17, where proposed side yard 1.9 feet when minimum 25 feet required. Chapter 301-17, where proposed combined side yard 8.9 feet when minimum 55 feet required. And chapter 301-15A1C, where proposed accessory structure setback 2.8 feet when minimum 20 feet required.
Do I hear a motion for adjournment to March 23rd?
Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Barnes.
Aye.
Mr. Guzzillo.
Aye.
Mr. Whitmire.
Aye.
Mrs. Zawiski.
Aye.
And I vote aye. So see you folks on the 23rd.
Okay, we have appeal 2023-014 James Hanley, 202 Washington Avenue, Jamesport, Suffolk County Tax Map number 600-90-1-1, RB40 zoning for variances and/or relief from chapter 301-17, where proposed side yard setback is 5.5 feet, minimum required is 25 feet. Chapter 301-17, where proposed side yard abutting, side yard street abutting setback is 20.7 feet, minimum required is 25 feet. Chapter 301-17, where proposed combined side yard is 26.2 feet, minimum required is 55 feet.
Do I hear your motion to adjourn this until?
Mr. Chairman.
March 23rd.
Second.
Second.
Mr. Barnes.
Aye.
Mr. Guzzillo.
Aye.
Mr. Whitmire.
Aye.
Mrs. Zawiski.
Aye.
And I vote aye. Okay, let's start off the night.
Okay, appeal 2022-039 HK Ventures, 4285 Middle Country Road, Calverton, Suffolk County Tax Map number 600-116-1-2, industrial C zoning for variances and/or relief from chapter 301, section 123A, where proposed impervious surface coverage is 65.51% of the total lot area and maximum permitted is 60%. And where proposed building height is 38 feet, center line of roof peak, and the maximum is 30 feet, adjourned from January 12th, 2023.
All right, you've been sworn in, just give us your name and address.
Good evening, for the applicant Matthew Ingber from the law firm of Brown, Altman, and Delio, 538 Broadhollow Road, Suite 301, Melville, New York, 11747. So we're here tonight for the area variance application for HK Ventures to develop an industrial warehouse facility at 4285 Middle Country Road in Calverton. With me this evening are some of our project experts, Jaclyn Pronto, PE of Key Civil Engineering, our project civil engineer, Mike Messina of BLD Architecture, the project architect, as well as Scott Johns, a representative for the applicant. As a reminder, we previously appeared before this board on December 8th of 2022, as well as January 12th of 2023, where we presented this application, and expert testimony was provided. We ask that the record from the prior two hearings be incorporated into tonight's minutes. As will be more fully explained by our project experts, the applicant has revised the site plan since the last meeting. In regard to the impervious surface area variance, this has been reduced from 65.51% to 60.72%, where 60% is permitted. And second, the height of the buildings has been reduced from 38 feet to 35 feet, where 30 feet is required. So we're going to amend the application accordingly with this new relief. We do note, and as was previously discussed by Mr. Bergman at the January 12th meeting, in the matter of Calverton Pods Distribution Warehouse, that's appeal number 2016-059 from December 8th, 2016, this board granted a height variance for the building at 3651 Middle Country Road in Calverton to allow for a building height of 35.5 feet, where 30 feet was required. We believe that reducing the height of the buildings in this application to 35 feet, which again is less than the 35.5 feet granted by the board in the Pods Distribution Warehouse case, is consistent with this board's precedent. So with that, I would like to have our project civil engineer, Jackie Pronto, to discuss the revisions that were made to the plan.
It was one in last meeting, so just state your name and your address.
Jaclyn Pronto, Key Civil Engineering, 664 Blue Point Road, Holtsville, New York. Does the board have a copy of the updated drawings?
Yes.
Okay, I have additional copies if needed. So since we last appeared before this board, we further reviewed the site plan. We determined some additional areas where impervious surfaces could be proposed. The additional pervious areas are located behind the west buildings, between the loading doors and man doors, while still maintaining a 28-foot wide drive aisle. In addition, we've added a 12-foot wide strip of pervious pavement along the easterly curve line, also still maintaining the 28-foot wide drive aisle. These areas are not utilized by trucks or passenger vehicles, and therefore would not impact the site's functionality. Further, if needed for emergency purposes, these areas are designed as H20 loading, so they can be driven over if needed. So in summary, the impervious surface exceeds the code requirement by less than 1%. It's 0.72% over the requirement, which is a variance request of 1.2%. Is the board have any questions?
Thank you for cutting that down.
So it seems like you went back to the drawing board as we had asked, and we appreciate that, we really do. I just want to clear up a little confusion that I have. Are we still going to hear this case on the 23rd?
I would think.
Because there was a letter submitted to us, and they asked for it to be heard officially on March 23rd?
No.
April 13th.
April 13th, so again, we're going to have another hearing again? Or you're just submitting this for our information?
We know that you can't make a final decision because there's no SECR, so potentially that's the time.
That's the goal, to hit to that date, so you can, after the SECR's granted, and then we can pass it. Is that what you're hoping?
We're hoping to not need further presentation in regard to the items that are before this board.
But my question is, and maybe it's a legal counsel, do they have to repost it, since the application's going to be amended?
Yes, they should repost it.
So if they repost it, the legals have to be done, and a sign has to be put out?
Yeah, so the sign was posted for tonight. In terms of a public mailing, we've reduced the application, so the official, the original mailing should be sufficient.
That's sufficient as long as you're posting it.
Oh, sure, yeah, we'll continue posting it if need be.
That's fine.
Yeah.
Just want to make sure that it's done legally and correctly, so that the public can have another opportunity if they want to come to the hearing and be heard.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. You have nothing else? Next up.
Nice job.
Fred, one, does anybody want to talk about HK Ventures?
Yeah, okay, well, let's just finish up. Name and address.
Michael Messina, 31 West Main Street, Patro, New York.
And you were sworn in last meeting, correct?
Yes, with BLD Architects. Do you have, uh, okay. So from the last meeting, again, we reduced the height of the building from 38 to 35 feet to the peak of the roof. We were able to lower it and keep the, maintain clearance inside the building that we were looking to do. And it's our understanding that, again, like, there was a variance that was previously approved for 35.5 feet, so we feel we're, you know, in the same vein as that with this building. So we were able to, you know, meet your request.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, all appreciate it.
Thank you.
So with that, that concludes our presentation, and we're here to answer any questions that the board may have or the public may have.
Let's go to the public. Is there anyone on Zoom that wants to be heard about this matter?
Raise your hand.
Raise your hand.
Okay, thanks for coming clean.
All right, nobody is to be heard on this matter, if you're on Zoom? Okay.
Okay.
So let's have an adjournment to?
4:30.
Yeah?
Okay, and we'll post for the April 13th hearing.
Mr. Chairman, I move that appeal number 2022-039 be adjourned on April 13th, 2023.
Mr. Barnes.
Aye.
Mr. Guzzillo.
Aye.
Mr. Whitmire.
Aye.
Mr. Zawiski.
Aye.
And I vote aye. See you folks on the 13th.
Okay, appeal 2023-010 Larry Schaefer, 84 Cedar Road, Wading River, Suffolk County Tax Map number 600-27-03-43, RB80 zoning for variances and/or relief from chapter 301-29A1B, where framed garage, 19 and 1/2 feet by 20.1 feet, existing side yard setback is 1.4 feet, roof overhang, and minimum required is 25 feet. Chapter 301-29A1B, where setback between 19 and 1/2 feet by 20.1 feet, and rear, 18.3 feet by 18.4 feet, garages, is 7 foot, and the minimum required setback between structures is 10 feet. Chapter 301-29A1C, where rear deck, rear setback is 12.7 feet, and minimum required is 20 feet. Chapter 301-29A1C, where storage bin, 2 feet by 16 feet, is .8 feet from side property line, and a minimum required is 20 feet. Chapter 301-29A1C, where storage bin, 3 feet by 9 feet, is 0 feet from side property line, and 7.7 feet from rear property line, and minimum required is 20 feet. Chapter 301-29A, where 4 foot by 4 foot wood landing and steps are 3 foot 3 inches to the rear property line, and minimum required is 20 feet. Chapter 301-31, where roofed over deck, front yard setback is 37.2 feet, and minimum required is 50 feet. Chapter 301-31, where lot coverage is 31.5%, maximum allowed is 15%.
Raise your right hand, please, do you swear to tell the truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
State your name and your address.
Lawrence Schaefer, 84 Cedar Road, Wading River, New York.
A little tight down there.
Yeah.
Okay, let's hear what you got.
I built these structures, most of them have been there for probably 20, almost 30 years, since I've been on this property. And I'm just looking to see if I can make them legal.
You never once got a permit in the beginning?
Uh, no.
Any reason why?
At the time, I just figured that, like, as far as the garage was concerned, that if I had to, I would just take them down. But I'm looking to stay on this property for long term, so I want to try to make them legal at this point, so.
How long ago were you?
I'm sorry?
How long ago did you take that property?
Back in 1992. So I've been on the property for 31 years now.
Sure wish you had gotten a permit back in the day, but. I mean, everything's pretty tight down there, the way they divided up those lots.
Yeah, yes.
Okay. Yeah, okay. Someone online wants to be heard?
How about in the audience?
The town of Riverhead feed is unmuted.
Hold on there, Janet.
Can't hear anything.
Hold on there, whoa, 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 whoa. Raise your right hand, do you swear to tell the truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God? Can you hear me?
I think she's saying the feed is not working, that's what she's trying to tell you.
The feed is muted still for the town of Riverhead.
He said Dawn's the tech. This definitely needs to be looked into for the future.
Hold on there, Janet.
Leroy, give him your telephone number.
Why don't you give him yours for a change?
That's the only way it worked.
I know. I wish it was the way she could speak.
I did, but what happens is my Zoom works for everything. There's something going on here, because this just proved it, because both of them had to call Leroy to be able to speak.
I mean, we could hear her. I don't know if she could hear us.
Are you guys muted on your computer?
No, it's something, we have multiple microphones going on here, so.
Ice cream.
Recording in progress.
It looks like you're off mute now via Zoom, but we still can't hear anybody?
Can you hear me?
Can you hear us now?
Are you able to hear me or see me?
And so the Leroy iPad Air 2, that one's on mute as well?
It's on mute? Hang on. The host is not allowing us to unmute themselves.
What's the matter?
So I'm trying to unmute.
Okay.
But it's not doing it, see, watch. Unmute. It's the host. So it's the hostess. So I just signed in to Dawn, and it's not.
But that one's also on mute, I don't know.
Can you hear me now, Janet?
I could just hear the Leroy iPad, that one I can hear.
Okay. So let's use mine then.
Thank you.
Who should hold this? Dawn, why don't you do this?
Can you hear us?
Too close to the mic.
Yeah.
I tried.
This is, I say we adjourn this until next meeting.
I just muted.
Oh, sure.
Can you hear us now?
Yes.
Okay, we got it, thank you, Chip. Thank you.
Just, can we hear her? Chip was just here. Little Vern.
I say we adjourn this at the next meeting, this is silly, I want to hear what.
Can you get it back on this thing? So we don't have to see him.
Do we hear him?
We can hear you perfectly now.
Awesome, bingo. All right, Janet, if you kindly raise your right hand, do you swear to tell the truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yeah, that was perfect.
You sure he can hear me?
Dawn, move it over to her.
Okay. Raise your right hand.
No, I meant the screen.
Raise your right hand.
Put it on her.
We're going to swear you in.
Oh, the wrong person's raising their hand.
Jen, that's you.
Janet, you have to raise your right hand. That's the right hand, yes. Do you swear to tell the truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Has Jen speaking already?
She can't hear us.
We can't hear her.
I thought you had to go over to the screen.
Now we can't hear her.
Okay, I don't know why I'm speaking right now.
We got you now.
We got you.
Can you hear us?
Oh, yeah, I can hear you.
Raise your right hand, do you swear to tell the truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes.
Raise your right hand. State your name, state your name and your address.
Jen Beshel, 1379 Pecanic Bay Boulevard.
Wrong hearing.
Okay, you got the floor, let's hear it.
Oh, so actually, Danny was going to speak on behalf of our house.
Are you on the Wading River matter? 12 Phyllis.
No, Jamesport matter.
12 Phyllis. 12 Phyllis got adjourned.
Yes. We read it right in the beginning, that was adjourned. So Phyllis' next meeting.
Oh, okay, thank you. We couldn't hear from the beginning of the meeting, so, okay.
All right, Phyllis, next meeting.
That's next meeting?
Yes, we're adjourners.
Okay, thank you, awesome.
March 23rd, folks.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Let's hear your motion. That's my, we did it already. I'm talking about this. There's nobody online for this hearing?
Anybody on board for Cedar? Road?
That's a good way to get rid of everybody.
Wait, wait, do we swear you in? And you got the floor, let's go. There's no opposition.
Is there anybody else?
Anybody be heard on this matter, in the audience? Now, he's a newspaper guy, and he's a Yankee fan, we always.
Yeah, get out of here.
Buy new hats, who are you?
Fight him.
Say it, Tim.
You're doing a good job, keep reporting.
All right, if nobody has any problems with this matter, let's have a reading.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I move with appeal number 2023-010, I move that Larry Schaefer, 84 Cedar Road, Wading River, Suffolk County Tax Map number 600-27.3-43, in RB80 zoning for variances and/or relief from chapter 301-29A1B, where framed garage with side yard setback of 1.4 foot, that's where the roof overhang goes, against the minimum required is 25 foot, rear setback to 18 by 18 garage is 6 foot, when minimum required is 10 foot. Chapter 301-29A1C, where rear wood deck, rear setback is 12.7 foot, and minimum required is 20 foot. Chapter 301-29A1C, where 16 by 2 storage bin is .8 foot from sideline property, and minimum required is 20 foot, is 3.8 foot from rear property line, when minimum required is 20 foot. Chapter 301-29A, where 4 by 4 wood landing and steps are 3 foot 3 inches to the rear property line, and minimum required is 20 foot. Chapter 301-29A, where 8.5, 5 foot roofed over deck, front yard setback is 37.2 foot, and the minimum required is 50 foot. Chapter 301-29A1C, where 3 foot by 9 foot storage bin is .8 foot from side property line, and minimum required is 20 foot. 7.7 foot from rear property line, and minimum required is 20 foot. And chapter 301-31, where lot coverage is 31.5% maximum, and the maximum allowed is 15%, be granted in accordance with the applications and sketches with amendments thereto, if any filed by the building inspector.
Second.
Mr. Barnes.
Aye.
Mr. Guzzillo.
Aye.
Mr. Whitmire.
Aye.
Mrs. Zawiski.
Aye.
I vote aye. The appeal's been granted about two weeks from now, you'll be getting some paperwork. Best of luck.
Take care, Israel.
I tell you, good luck with building it, but it's already there, so.
Thank you.
Nice little spot down there.
Take care.
Okay, appeal 2023-012 Chris Calleades Dynasty Trust, 25 Zunbuckin Lane, Jamesport, Suffolk County Tax Map number 600-92-6-16, RB40 zoning for variances and/or relief from chapter 301-17, where proposed front yard setback is 4.8 feet, minimum required is 50 feet. Proposed side yard setbacks are 6 foot, 7.9 feet, minimum required are 25 feet and 55 feet, and proposed impervious surface coverage is 35.7%, maximum allowed is 15%.
And if you kindly raise your right hand, do you swear to tell the truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes, I do.
State your name and your address.
Sure, my name is Karen Hoag, I'm an attorney with Tumilethum Shea. That's okay, that just wore me in anyway. So the address for Tumilethum Shea. So the, um, the address for Tumileatham is thirty-three West Second Street in Riverhead. Also here with me this evening are the owners of the property, Mr. and Mrs. Kallides, as well as Lisa Poyer from Twin Forks Permitting. Um, I have prepared a memo addressing the variant standards, and I also have some photographs, um, that I'd like to submit to the board if I can approach and hand them out. The subject premises are a nine thousand six hundred seventeen square foot waterfront parcel located in the B40 residential zone. The parcel's a pre-existing, non-conforming lot, and the applicant proposes various modifications to the existing two-story dwelling and site improvements to improve functionality for their family. We're proposing removal of one thousand eight hundred and twenty-six square feet, namely the sunroom, asphalt driveway on the easterly side, walkways, patio, bay window, and shed. We're adding roughly two thousand five hundred and thirty-three square feet, which consists of the attached garage at grade, additional living space on the first and second floor, to add space for bathrooms, the proposed paper patio on grade, proposed front porch, and impervious driveway and walkways. The additions, with the exception of the attached garage, will primarily be in the existing footprint of the house. Lot coverage from the existing improvements to proposed remains the same at thirty-five point seven percent. The various relief that is needed, which is contained in Town Code 301-17, is for the following. A front yard setback is needed for the proposed residence at four point eight feet, where fifty feet minimum is required. This is due to the location of the proposed attached garage at grade. The setback, the side yard setbacks for the proposed residence is six feet and seven point nine feet, where twenty-five feet minimum is required. The existing side yard is four point one feet to the shed on the easterly side that is being removed, and nine point six to the house on the easterly side, and seven point eight feet to the house on the westerly side. So we're going from nine point six to six feet due to a side yard entrance to the house on the easterly side. The side yard setback on the westerly side is roughly the same as existing. The total side yard for the proposed residence will total thirteen point nine feet, where a minimum of fifty-five feet is required. Existing total side yard setback is seventeen point four feet, and the difference between proposed and existing is due to the large, is due largely in part to the proposed access stairs for the house access on the easterly side. The proposed impervious surface coverage of thirty-five point seven percent, where maximum allowed is fifteen percent, roughly remains the same as existing at thirty-five point seven percent. Uh, turning to the variant standards, which are set forth more detailed in the memo that I provided to you, I just wanted to touch upon the character of the neighborhood. Like the existing dwelling, the proposed location for the new, for the two-story dwelling will be similar in character to the neighboring properties. The neighborhood is characterized by a number of undersized lots with houses that predate zoning and exist within front and side yard setbacks. If you look what is depicted in Exhibit A, we provided an aerial showing the neighboring properties as well as their, uh, property addresses. So the proposed garage, although attached to the house, mimics the location of detached garages on the neighboring properties on both sides of the subject lot. Both neighboring garages are within the side yard setbacks as well. So there are seven properties along Dunlop and Lane, which are located on the south side of the street. The easternmost property is an oversized lot at point six-six acres and is not similar to the other six properties on the south side. The other six properties on the south side of Dunlop and Lane range in size from point four-three to point two acres, with the average lot size at point two-six acres. The subject property is point two-two acres. Of the six properties, four of the lots contain a detached or semi-detached garage in the front yard of the residence. The properties located at five, thirteen, nineteen, and thirty-one Dunlop and contain existing detached garages. If you look at Exhibit B, which is five Dunlop and, the existing detached garage is located point zero feet from the northern property line setback. On thirteen Dunlop and, the existing detached garage is located point five feet from the northern property line setback. Furthermore, this garage appears to be attached to the residence by way of a covered porch between the residence and garage. At nineteen Dunlop and, the existing detached garage is located point six feet from the northern property line setback. We have spoken with the owners of thirty-one Dunlop and, which is attached as Exhibit E, and behind Exhibit E as well as a photograph of the existing conditions on that site. There's also a letter and support by the neighbor. And turn to twenty-five Dunlop and, which is the application presently before you, the proposed attached garage setback at four point eight feet exceeds or matches other detached garages located along the street front. Exactly sixty-six percent of the existing residents along Dunlop and contains a garage structure in the front yard. The proposed addition of a garage in the front yard will fit within the character of the neighborhood due to the fact that over fifty percent of the residents have similar characteristics. Turning to the variant standard recording, the benefit cannot be achieved by some other method feasible for the applicant to pursue. Due to the lot size and lot configuration, area variances are required. We're seeking to construct the dwelling within the existing footprint in order to reconfigure and expand the livable space within the house. By expanding into the front yard with the attached garage, the main part of the house will be available for additional living space. The project does not propose any additional bedrooms. We also have, um, a letter from the DEC, which we can provide, and I think which was provided, um, along with the application. But there's no location on the property which would allow any modifications or construction as of right due to the size of the lot. The area variances are not substantial. The current dwelling is situated seven point eight feet and nine point six feet from the side yards. New dwelling will be located seven point nine feet and six feet respectively. The proposed location does not represent a substantial change for side yard setbacks, and it will not increase any of the impervious surface coverage from the current coverage. The applicant's lot is undersized and has been undersized prior to ratification of the current zoning law, and we have taken measures to minimize the proposed development on a portion of the property that is already improved with the pre-existing dwelling, which was constructed prior to nineteen sixty-five. And for the above reasons, we respectfully request that the variances that we're seeking be granted, and happy to answer any questions that the board may have.
And there's nobody on Zoom about this, right? She's checking.
Maybe I haven't gotten to the right page yet. What's above the garage, if anything?
The, the proposed garage?
Yes.
Um, there's nothing proposed above the garage.
Thank you.
Janet, wasn't she for the other one, wasn't she for Phyllis?
Yes, Phyllis, that's right. She was for Phyllis.
Maybe there's nothing better to watch on TV.
Just to clarify, there is a second floor office proposed above the garage. It's on A5.
Okay. Got it.
Is this a second story? There's an office there.
Oh, I see, yep.
He was asking if Janet Kohler is here to speak on this application.
She's, she was on the other application.
Yeah, she just, I don't know.
Oh, Phyllis, she was on Phyllis.
She was on Phyllis land, whatever.
Okay, so then, then there's no one else, she's the only one on.
Okay, anyone else to be heard on this matter? Let's have a read.
Hi, Mr. Chairman, respectfully, I move regarding appeal number 2023-012, I move the appeal of Chris Kallides, K-A-L-I-A-D-E-S Dynasty Trust, twenty-five Dunlop and Lane, Jamesport, NCTM Number 600-92-92-point-6-16, RB40 zoning for variances and/or relief from Chapter 301-17, where proposed front yard setback is four point eight feet, minimum required is five zero feet. Proposed side yard setbacks are six feet slash seven point nine feet, minimum required are twenty-five feet slash fifty-five feet, and proposed impervious surface, serf, service cover coverage is thirty-five point seven percent, maximum allowed is fifteen percent. Be approved in accordance with the applications and sketches with amendments thereto, if any is filed with the building inspector.
Second.
Mr. Barnes.
Aye.
Mr. Gazillo.
Aye.
Mr. Whitmire.
Aye.
Mr. Zoeski.
Aye.
And I vote aye. See, appeal's been granted, and it was a nice presentation, thank you.
Thank you, have a good evening.
You too. Good luck, guys, enjoy your house. Nice view to the harbor.
Give my regards to Mr. Quitero.
Got you.
Understood.
All right, do I hear a motion to accept the minutes of the last meeting?
So movements, Chairman.
All in favor?
Aye.
I abstain, I wasn't at the meeting.
We always have one, right? Anyway, do I, uh, hear a motion to adjourn?
So movements, Chairman.
All in favor?
Aye.
Phyllis' name was adjourned to what? Phyllis' adjourned to.